All right, ladies and gentlemen, time to come to order. We're up. Get this business started. Morning and set in. Getting started, y'all. Everybody getting quiet? First thing we're gonna have is a public hearing for annexation and rezoning request. And Mr. Holman's gonna take care of that first.
Ladies and gentlemen, I call now for a public hearing for re-annexa- or excuse me, for annexation and rezoning for property located at 6492 Seventh Street here in Lula. Cook Communities wants to annex a portion of the parcel into the city of Lula and to rezone the property from agricultural to planned residential development to allow three single-family residential units per acre. The initial application showed the property consisting of 30.27 acres. The council received a revised site plan from the applicant today showing the parcel consists of 20.35 acres. The process we will-
Y'all gotta hear what y'all talking. You can't hear if you're talking.
Process we will follow is I will call the applicant forward to explain what the application seeks. I will then ask, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this request? And those who are here tonight to speak in favor, that would be your opportunity to speak. Once that's concluded, I will then ask, is anyone here, or are there folks here to speak in opposition or against the request? If you're here to speak in opposition to the request, that will be your opportunity to speak. If you wish to have a copy of these procedures, they are within the city zoning ordinance, that'll be provided to you. So with that, is the applicant here.
Yes, sir.
Come up, please. We do, I'm sorry, they told me I meant to make sure that I asked that y'all tell us your name and address so that we'll have an accurate record of tonight's hearing. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jane Range. I'm an attorney on 200 E. Butler Parkway in Gainesville, Georgia. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Cook Communities. The first thing, I think, just the site plan, it might've been hard to read, but I think it's 29.35. So it just, the new survey came in just under the 30.27-
Thank you.
-that the old deed says. So we have the 90 acre, 90 lot, which would be just a touch above three acres fractionally, but that's what we had calculated and drawn out. In the original that we submitted of the site plan and application, this was going to be a two entrance subdivision, which would go through the Narramore subdivision to kind of the east of the property. And after listening to neighbors and speaking with Mr. Bergen and the planning commission meeting, we have dropped that entrance from Narramore and now are proposing to bring the entrances in only through Seventh Street. And we have also spoken and said that we would contribute paving of Seventh Street to make it a full two-lane, you know, road so that automobiles could pass and then provide an adequate entrance to the subdivision. Did everyone get a copy of the new site plans?
I haven't handed those out yet.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you got extra copies.
All right. Okay. I've got some here. It may not be enough for everybody, but this cover letter on the front kind of explains the changes that we proposed. The other features of the subdivision that have, that are there that we think are of benefit to the subdivision and will help increase the quality of life for everybody is that we're proposing some passive amenities in the sense of a pocket park and barbecue, community barbecue pit and walking trails so that there will be some recreation within the subdivision. This subdivision would also be created with a professional HOA managed so that there would be funds to cover the stormwater ponds that would be necessary and sidewalks, any other kind of improvements that might exist out there and to keep up the grounds so that the appearance of the subdivision is well-maintained. We have also said there are some issues about this having sewer and that the guarantee that the sewer's going in hasn't happened yet, but we would accept the zoning contingent on the sewer happening. We will contribute any of the right-of-way easements necessary for the sewer line to be laid through the property and work with the city in any way we can on that as well to make sure that y'all can fit it in. And again, with the subdivision of the size it is, that would be a substantial number of new users to help pay sewer tax that offset the cost of the new sewer system. So the subdivision homes are kind of a mixture of farmhouse, some are a little bit more like the prairie-style proposed single-family residences. It's not townhomes, it's individual houses on lots so that it'll keep the more typical residential development around town, whereas mostly single-family homes. And it basically two-car garages so that you don't have to have street parking or a lot of clutter out in the driveways in terms of vehicles, but would certainly allow folks to have visitors an extra car to get into the driveway because they've got the double garage. So the layout of the property, as you see, is trying to leave the, as much of the open space, there's creeks along the property so that we have some upper areas, but again, that allows area for kids to play. And in one of the areas, in the easterly side where the creek runs through, the pocket park is just above the creek, and to the bottom side of that, what we're producing, proposing is, we can't go into undisturbed buffer, but in the previous buffer, we would like to put basically like a large playing field where kids could play soccer, baseball, football, or community events if they wanted to do some kind of concerts or nights out to see the movies on the flag green kind of thing. So that, trying to make it a self-sufficient subdivision, but also something that would be attractive for the city, give folks a kind of opportunity to, a new form of housing that's, you know, not as traditional in the sense that most of everything else has grown up on the square grid pattern of the roadways in town, this is, you know, going to be a traditional subdivision. But the, basically, we think that the prices would be a minimum of $300,000, may approach $400,000. As you know, the prices for building houses has been a little bit volatile. And so we can't guarantee what the pricing exactly would be, but with the size of the homes that you're looking at, you're probably over $300,000 a house per home. And we think by not interrupting the existing subdivision and coming off Seventh Street, it will have more of an in-town atmosphere for the folks that buy and that Lula will be, feel more like their home and they'd have a reason to visit downtown and use the shops in the area in the city and that you're not just gonna get a sleep-in, you know, drive-away-from-Lula kind of neighborhood that you'll end up with in a town neighborhood where Lula has attractions for the folks that live there and are close in and participate in the life of the city. So we feel that the subdivision would be an advantage to the city. It would let you have a new source of tax revenue, sewer and water revenue to help you expand your system, that it would be attractive, and the appearance of the subdivision would be an attribute for Lula as well. And so it's, as, within things that's new and a little bit different, sometimes it seems imposing or frightening, but we really think that it would be an asset to Lula overall in terms of adding to opportunities in town, adding to the population with people who would have a reason to be committed to Lula as their home. And that, but this, these changes in the design that we have improved the chances that this won't be, you know, drive-in at night and stay asleep and turn you into a sleeper community, but be something that people would want to partake of in town. Do you have any questions for me about what's in the proposal? Because, you know, with the annexation, you know, obviously that is a decision that you make whether you even want this in town. If you deny the annexation, obviously we won't be talking about the zoning or the subdivision, but we really do think that this would be a positive for Lula, a positive for folks who are staying in the area and wanting to look at newer homes. And also a way to help develop the downtown clientele because y'all, it's really hard to find rebuilt business districts here and keep Lula independent of having to be a satellite of Gainesville or Cleveland or Commerce or some other town. So we really would like to be able to come here and help. And if there's any time left, I would like to reserve a couple minutes for rebuttal.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you have any questions, I'm here, Mr. Cook is here, he can answer the questions for you if things come up. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Is anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in favor of the request? Is anyone, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. My name's Chris Lu Allen, 6492 Seventh Street. This is my property, our property that we're developing tonight. Lived in Lula all my life. First five years, my parents rented different places. 1972, when I was five, they bought this property. Me and my sister grew up there. About 30 years ago, I bought it from my parents. Me and my wife, we got married, she moved there. We raised our kids there. We feel that we wanna do more farming. We feel with the changes, with the sewer coming in, you know, the city's put it in the residential, so I think everybody knows this is the direction this property's moving in. It's, I feel that that's the best use of this property at this time as residential. We listed it for sale, all that we had a lot of interest, all developed. There's no, nobody's looking to buy a 30-acre farm, two farm, you know, beside another subdivision. You know, like I said, I've been here all my life. Family's here. We're gonna move off when this sells, but my mother, my sister still lives here. My sister owns a home and lives in Narramore. Our property backs up to this, to my property, which will be this subdivision. And anybody knows me, knows I'm not gonna do anything that's gonna hurt my family. If I thought this was detrimental to Lula and my family, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be doing this. I think it's a good thing. We know there's a need for housing. We've all seen the stories and how quick houses are going, people going on the market with their homes. You know, they're getting bids above what they asked for. We know there's a lot of business moving in Gainesville that need houses for working families. And, you know, like I said, at this time, I just feel like that's the best use of this property and, you know, I appreciate that the city would approve this. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of this request? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lu Allen really said it beautifully, but indeed, I'm his agent and we looked at the property together. We really saw immediately the highest investment-
What's your name?
Leslie Flint.
What's your address?
What's my address?
Just what's your business address?
My business address. 4977 Lake Laniere Parkway. I might have to check my business. I work out of my house.
I was just trying to follow rules with the council, that's all.
Oh, okay. Well, maybe I'll give this card to the council. Would that be all right for the moment? Okay.
I thought you said state or name and your address.
Oh, 5182 Cash Road, Flower Branch, Georgia.
Thank you.
Will that be okay? Okay. Sorry about that. As I said, Mr. Lu Allen really said it, is the highest and best use, is obviously residential real estate. And I just wanted to share a little bit more on the need for residential real estate because I've been a Realtor in Hall County for 22 years. And I've never seen anything quite like this. I don't think anybody has. The shortage isn't just a shortage. We're in desperate, desperate need of housing, desperate need all over the county. Just to give you an example, working with a client in this price point, working with him for a year, putting offer after offer after offer, last offer he put in, over asking price, everything in place, the agent called me back and said, "We have 45 offers on this property." That's what I mean when I say desperate need of housing. And obviously, that's affecting price points because 2020, the average square foot for housing in Lula was, based on the statistics from FMLS, was $87 a square foot. Now the FMLS is saying it's $157 a square foot. All counties higher, $177 a square foot. So we're seeing, you know, the pricing's been affected, which is obviously affecting what developers can do and to be able to offer housing for working families. So again, I know, we're happy that the council's considering this seriously because there's a great need for housing, for people to be able to have that, that one thing that we need is our home. And we don't need necessarily big yards, but we do need a house. So thank you for thinking of, taking it through so carefully.
Anyone else here to speak in favor of the request? Anyone else to speak in favor? Is anyone here to speak against this request? Come forward, please.
Hi, I'm Debbie Parson. I live at 162 Bell Road in Lula. My husband owns a home on Seventh Street, 6306 Thorough Inn. And if everyone knows, they go up through there, everyone parks on the side of the road. My daughter and three children live in this home. They have nowhere to play, we're scared they're gonna run out in the road. We've already had to invest in security cameras because of people speeding past the stop sign. That has been set to the city also to observe. So this house was built in 1873. We took, our family took it over in 47. So, you know, I urge you guys to both know on this proposal, this will be damaging to the people that live on Seventh Street. There's not room for double lane. This house will be next to the road, the porch will, if they put double lanes up through there. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak against this request?
My name's Frances Banks. I live at 5564 Lu Allen Circle. I felt though it was really for or against, it sounds like a good thing for the city, the way she was talking with the HOA and everything. The two questions that came to my mind from her, the representative speaking was, one, I wanted to know if the land regulations will require, it said 90 lots, it's less than 30 acres, if the land record, I thought it was one house per acre. If I'm wrong, I'd like to know what, how many homes are allowed on per acre. The other option I had, I heard a state, they were scrapping a second entrance. With the number of homes or lots available, I was thinking if the road got blocked for any reason, there'd be no way for any analysis or fire department to get in there. I do think it needs to have two entrances for the number of lots ahead of the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak against this request?
My name's Dwayne Horst. I live at 196 railroad. And again, I don't know if this is necessarily for or against. I'm fairly new to the Lula community. I moved here in October. And the biggest thing that I would ask you, the council, is to truly consider how it's going to not only affect the people of Lula, but those directly surrounding this new proposed community. I moved to Lula because I like the small-town feel. My personal feelings as to whether or not we should be growing or not is really irrelevant. I would just ask that you guys truly consider how it's going to affect the community and those directly around it and not necessarily how much tax revenue can be gained from such community. Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak against the request? Yes, we got two folks coming. Y'all go in line up, okay?
Hi, my name's Brian Andrews. I live at 6468 Narramore Court. I'm not against development. I think that the subdivision would be good in a way, but it needs to be bigger than three houses per acre. The city of Lula can't handle an average of 180 cars coming out of that subdivision off of Seventh Street, onto Old Cornelia Highway, or even up the road. We don't have the means, we don't have the means to handle that much traffic. Growth is needed here, but this is the wrong type of growth. Thank you.
I'm Ben Perry. My wife owns the property in 6456 Seventh Street. I guess the question I have, I didn't really hear it clarified. I was looking on her surveys and it shows the current right-of-way for that road is 40 feet. Right now, the road's 15 feet. So to go about an extension, everybody on the right side going down for our property, it's not really that big a deal, but you're gonna be building that road right in front of people's front doors. They'll step out onto the street essentially. I don't know if that's a good idea. I was looking at the map back there. That other entrance seemed more appropriate, but you're really taking a lot out there and I guess you're gonna have to take a lot out of that church that's kind of historic that's right there, the African-American church. From what I understand, it's been there for a long time. So I think you need to really consider how this road situation's gonna work out because you're gonna take some chunks out of people's front yards. And if they do, like the other person said, have small children, they go running out the door, they're gonna be right in the street.
I'm not opposing, I just have a question. Sorry. My name is Cassie Swerengen. I live at 6747 Old Cornelia Highway, Lula, Georgia. I'm here more as a representative of the historical society. In the Seventh Street and how the road and the entrance to this new subdivision will affect the historical cemetery at the end of that road. So that's what I'm here asking. I'm not opposing the development, but I am opposing any encroachment into the historical cemetery. Is there a answer by any chance to how the entrance will affect, entrance will affect the cemetery area?
So we're gonna address those questions that I'm writing down just briefly. So I've got that one down.
Thank you.
My name is Blake Edwards, 6444 Narramore Way, Lula, Georgia, 3054. The growth is not necessarily bad, and I think we all know that. My questions are this, they're proposing to put these homes in, they're giving us all these good things that it's gonna do, but in that HOA, are they allowing, are they gonna allow Airbnbs? Are they gonna allow the ROBs? Because I'm also in the real estate market and those types of things cause problems. You know, and I would just ask for, if we can get a copy of that HOA so that we could look at it or that, you know, you guys can look at it. Because if they sell half of those houses to an LLC and half of them become rentals, we all, we all know what that can do for the community, especially if they have, you know, there's no clause in there saying that there's no Airbnbs to be done. You know, growth is gonna happen, and we know that. It's inevitable. But the type of growth is up to us, and that's why people live out here. And they don't like, they don't like Gainesville. That's, that's why they come here. Thank you.
Travis Rithold, 6400 Narramore Way, Lula, Georgia. First of all, we appreciate your patience with us tonight. I was going back and forth and we thank you for the time that allowed us all to speak. Already a lot of interesting comments tonight, you know, for and against. Of course, I'm up here against it, living in Narramore. I do like the fact that they scrapped the idea of coming through Narramore. And I hope that the city will hold them to that at all circumstances if they try to come back to it, that that is off the table now. I don't think Seventh Street can handle it unless they're planning on buying every house down through there. Those folks have lived there a long time and they have a right to be able to walk off of their front porch without looking to see if a car's coming first. I pulled down through Seventh Street myself last week. I have a dually truck, you know, it's a little bit smaller than a cement truck. As a car came up, I mean, I'd get there and pull in somebody's yard, they, they, if they pull in their yard, they couldn't come by me, they was in a small SUV. That's nice of them to offer, oh, they're gonna help, they're gonna help with the paving proceeds. Well, are they gonna help with the school, make more room for all these kids that's gonna be back there? Because those kids are gonna come a whole lot faster than those tax dollars does off that property patch. You know, there's other places to do this, small-town areas, and like the other man just said, I lived up here from Gainesville. I was, I was a lifelong resident of Gainesville. Matter of fact, the first time I came up here, I got halfway up here and drove around and turned around and went back. And then I said, "No, I'm tired of this in Gainesville, that's why I came up here." We're in the city limits. And I've looked around, because I travel around a lot in my building in real estate. Not many small towns have anything like this in the city limits, not even Gainesville. Gainesville has 90 units on, you know, we're not talking 30 acres. With all this soccer fields and all this stuff that sounds so great, we're getting back down to about 20 acres or less with roads. We're talking 90 units? So we're actually talking apartment buildings. So the label is an apartment building. They're saying, "Do we want a 90-unit apartment building in downtown Lula that's gonna bring all of this stuff in?" Because that's what it's gonna be, it's apartment units. You can't put 90 acres on less than 20 acres and it'd be anything less. But they couldn't get apartment units in, so we call it a residential development opportunity. Do we need growth? Yes, we need controlled growth. We've got a lot of large lots out here in Lula that can build 90 units on. You know, it needs to be done in a growth, land, development way, not just rushing in on, because, you know, even the 30-acre top, he's been here all his life, but he ain't planning on staying being a neighbor, not even in the city. That's what we hoping, not, you know, moving away. So what, here's, there's 90 units on that property we left behind with everybody else getting, you know, run over in the process by development. Let's, you know, another interesting comment that was made last meeting about fire. Got to think about that after I left. You know, that sounds great, well, you know, fire, but hey, we got a fire department a mile and a half away, don't we? Two miles at the most. Does it need a fire truck there? I needed fire ambulance one day. Guess what? There wasn't no ambulance. They had to come from Gillsville, about 10 miles away. And you know what? We had to wait on them too to get one. So what happens then when you've got that kind of density and a fire broke out? We can have a barbecue pit, so, tell you, a lot of people that don't know about that little barbecue pit, it's a little wild sometimes, it would. But the fact is, our fire service is not ready for anything like this. Our infrastructure is nowhere near ready for anything like this, and our school system is not ready for anything like this. And from the looks of it, our community as a whole is not ready for this. for this.
Hi, I'm Carrie Mary, 5665 Maiden Lane, a new resident in Lula, I've only been here a little over a year, so I didn't wanna come up and talk, I feel like I'm not established enough yet. But I do intend to stay, unless we start putting up WalMarts and Starbucks, and I think 90 units is just too much for that Seventh Street. I walk up and down this acute, romantic little street with nice neighbors that talk to me, they don't know me, they talk to me. And I just think it's too much, I'd feel a lot more comfortable if it's more than 30 units than 90. That's all. I'm okay with being a satellite town too.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Virgil Aigood, I live at 64-18 Narromore Way. I know that the Seventh Street, it's obvious that that many cars per day can't go up and down Seventh Streets safely. I asked at the city planning meeting if they had done a traffic study on Narromore, because that's where I live. There is no buffers on, on either Narromore or South. So there is no way that they can get safely into that area and out of that area. Two cars twice a day, that's 360 cars, that's 360 trips up and down those roads. That's a minimal. And with what most everybody out here's gotten now, is at least three cars. How many driveways do you go in and say three, four, and five cars? So, I asked for a traffic study, I haven't heard anything about it on Seventh Street or Narromore. Now, I don't think they've done it. But the buffer zones on the sides of the roads, we have no sidewalks. We have no room for sidewalk. Sewer system. Ours are all septic tanks. And if they try to go in there with a sewer system, who's gonna pay for it? Are we gonna have to hook up with the sewer system? As a tax purpose? Are we gonna have to hook up? I'm already hooked up to water. But the sewer system is something that the people on Narromore don't have. I don't know about Seven. But the sewer system, there is none on Narromore. So they're not gonna be able to use, I don't believe, the sewer system that's there that goes into the city now. Are they gonna build a plant? Where are they gonna build it? That's the next question. Where is the sewage gonna be handled? Because obviously, with 30 acres, with 90 houses on it, absolutely no way they can put a plant in there to handle that kind of sewage. And like Robert said, the fire department, I had to have an ambulance to meet not too long ago, and it took them about 15 minutes to get there. And that's on Narromore from up at 52. So, we've already got problems down in there. And the fire department, they've all said that, you know, Narromore, our houses are far enough apart, that we're fairly safe. But you put that many houses over there, and nobody's gonna be safe.
We have one more, and then Mr. Angier asks for a chance for response, okay?
Hi. My name is Lynn McQuanry, I live at 6305 Grove Street, on the corner of Seventh and Grove. I'm the first speaker, it's my neighbor's mom, she has several small children. She has video of me walking my dog to the mailbox and almost getting hit by a speeder, which happens quite often. If you guys increase this traffic flow, it's gonna be a death trap. My neighbor also has several small children, wiping this road, it's going to leave home with a porch and no yard. We make our calls to the police when folks are speeding through, see something, say something, do nothing. We've talked to the police out there, pointed out vehicles when this has happened. And if you guys are seriously considering increasing that amount of traffic on those roads, you're making it a suicide trap for a lot of people. So I ask you sincerely, and honestly, from the bottom of my heart, please consider not passing this. As an ulterior, and this, I do not own this property, it has nothing to do with me, but I did notice that there is land for sale on Caldwell Road. So if you really want to renovate houses, check that out. Thank you.
Okay, would like anybody who wants to speak. Say their points, and I think the points were made. Mr. Angier wanted a time to respond.
Thank you. This is Mr. Keith Cook, and he said he'd like to address some of the points.
Hi, Keith Cook, 3120 Front Street Road. My brother Jeff and I, we're from here, we're not from Lula, we're from Halkam, grew up at West Halkam. And we, this is what we do for a living, we develop and build homes. Coming into communities, a lot of times, growth can be scary, managed growth doesn't scare you. And I think that's what we're here today, is really to figure out how we make this work with the city of Lula. Because at the planning commission, we heard, Narromore, we don't want the, we don't want a food subdivision. So we redesigned our plans to figure out how can we make it through Seventh Street. So what we're proposing, and I agree with you 100%, if Seventh Street lays there today, it is an inadequate road. Okay? Two cars can get up and down it, I mean, everybody knows that. But what we're proposing to do is widen it. There's current right-of-way already there. There's also, in that right-of-way, we're proposing to increase the size of the road in order for two cars to be able to pass. Now, for the safety concerns, there's things that we can do, like speed bumps, speed breakers. We've done...
Mr. Cook, wait a minute, let me hear, Mr. Cook, please, address the comments to the council.
So, speed breakers, speed bumps, we've done things in the past to help organize and everybody watches in our communities. So, just wanted to mention that. Also, a lot's been made about three homes per acre. I think if you look at the Tax Digest of Lula, most of the homes are on quarter-acre lots. The most recent subdivision that was passed is on about a fifth of an acre lots. So the lots that we're proposing are a little bit bigger than what's currently here. Also, talked about one entrance, one entrance is adequate for a non-home subdivision, usually you're getting around 150 units when you start looking at two entrances for a subdivision. A school impact report was issued when we submitted our application, and they talked about Airbnb, that usually an HOA doesn't govern that, but there is city ordinances that can be put in place by you guys to govern that. And then, no plan, of course, sewer plant's required on the property, their sewer is gonna be there, we're gonna be putting it in a manhole, and it's gonna go to this current plant that you guys use now. So, just wanted to let you guys know that. Turn that over to you.
Well, here's what we need to do, if the community wants to meet with the applicant, then the applicant will schedule that with you, but this is a hearing for the council. So let me have the comments made to the council. Thank y'all.
Part of this, in terms of the roadway, on the grid, has been a series of ongoing conversations with Mr. Bergen, we're trying to find the best way to widen the road. We recognize that that road is narrow now, that the pavement area is inadequate, certainly it could not handle the subdivision unless it is widened. But we also think that there is enough right-of-way that the road doesn't have to be perfectly straight, and it can accommodate some curves to avoid being directly on the front steps of any of the homes. Part of any subdivision, as you get in and you find out you can't engineer certain things, so we come in with proposals in anticipation of what we're going to find, and sometimes you run into snakes. We've already said with the sewer, we're not talking about a home, a sewer plant for this subdivision. You know, the city has proposed a sewer improvement, and we're willing to, you know, help with the passage through the subdivision and have the right-of-way, et cetera, so that we're contributing to the new sewer expansion that you're already planning, so that it just helps pay for something you're already talking about doing. And it may not be final, but as I said at the beginning, we are willing to accept a contingency, maybe we never can build what we want to build because sewer doesn't come, and we just have the land. That's a risk we would agree to take. And so, the money for the widening of the road, we have already volunteered that to Mr. Bergen, we've actually priced it, it's somewhere between 150 and $200,000. We'd be willing to absorb most or all of that cost for the paving. Now, some other things the city may need to do to make sure it has what it wants, whether sewer's gonna come into the city from that direction, you know, those are things we don't know. But basically, we're looking at that being a good neighbor and adding to the infrastructure of the city to accommodate what we're proposing. And again, we are, you know, if we are, can add some speed bumps, et cetera, and speed bumps work, I live in Gainesville, some of the folks that are here now tonight have lived in Gainesville, there's plenty of speed bumps, and if you don't slow down, you might take the bottom of your car out, so they will slow people down. And the traffic, you know, the situation with a lot of the younger home buyers is, they have jobs that they work from home, they don't have quite as many car trips as the more typical suburban, when I was growing up, my mom stayed home and she had 10 trips to make a day to Gary Kidd's places, et cetera. Things are a little different in terms of the lifestyle. And so, again, the homes that we're proposing, I don't want to leave the impression that this will be like apartment complexes. The homes that we're proposing are around 1,900 to 2,000 square feet per home. Other subdivisions in the area are more of 14 to 1,700 square feet. So, we are talking about substantial homes for folks. This is not going to be some kind of rental subdivision, it's aimed at buyers who are looking for a home, not a business investment. If we were building, you know, smaller homes, or it was a resort area type, this is, you know, more or less downtown Lula, and there's nothing wrong with downtown Lula, but in a subdivision, it's not exactly an entertainment spot that most area people wanna go to. They wanna go someplace that's downtown somewhere, or a resort area, or up into the mountains, so that they have something to do. This is aimed at single-family residential ownership by people who are very much like the people that are wanting to get away from wherever they came from, and the Lula people natives who want to protect something. This is bringing a substantial investment in terms of quality homes, significantly sized homes for modern buyers, schoolchildren, one of the other things, millennials, I'm a boomer, if you can't tell, you know, some people think I've bleached it blonde, but actually, that's just all the gray showing up. And so, basically, the, you know, boomers were having 2.8, 3.2 kids, millennials are not producing children at that rate. The current estimates on the new home buyers, millennials have now taken over boomers, it's the homeowners of the country there, they're up to 37%, and the boomers have dropped down to 33% of the homeowners, we're just, we're aging out, we're dying, and we're trying to downsize. And so, these are gonna be homes aimed at young couples, small families, and so the estimates for the number of children is gonna contribute despite the fact that it's up to 90 homes. I mean, they're gonna have to work with whatever the numbers come in at when we get the final surveys. But you're looking at maybe 32 children, and a subdivision this size won't be built out in one year, they're not all gonna show up. But, you know, the demographics have changed, and you're looking at a slightly different attitude to producing large families. And so, we're trying to bring something to Lula that, I realize there's a lot of concerns for any degree of change. And we realize that we're coming into downtown, so that there are older homes, there's this historic feel to downtown, and we're trying to develop, like I said, the farmhouse, kind of, some stone and brick and planking wood, so that it doesn't feel alien. And so that you have something that is, in its own way, going to be a pleasant and attractive neighborhood, just like the existing neighborhoods in the area. So, again, size-wise for the city, this is not out of line in terms of acreage and density, and we're trying to create some amenities so that your folks have a reason to stay at home, but also, like I said, to bring it into downtown so that there's more demand for the pizza parlor and the shops than the small businesses people are trying to operate here. That people think of this as home, and not just a place to sleep when they go shop somewhere else. So I think that we're bringing a contribution to help you build infrastructure you need. One of the reasons it's so dangerous and people, you know, promise speed is because they're, you know, feeling like that there's no one out there, and that'll change when people, you know, in the neighborhood will feel the same way about their kids are walking the dog, et cetera, in terms of how much police protection and protection for watching out for each other. We're not talking about rental, we're not talking about apartment homes, we're talking substantial, modern homes for families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Ralph, declare the public hearing closed. The item is on your agenda as item nine.
Welcome, welcome, welcome. This is a city council meeting for March 21st. I can't hear myself, thank you, if you're talking back there. I'd like to welcome everybody here, I'm glad you came, listen to the patient thing, and y'all have been very well behaved, I appreciate that. Now, what we want to do, we want to have a lower prayer, we're gonna say the praise of religions. So, if y'all think it's, I'll say a prayer. Dear heaven and father, thank you for bringing us here together, thank you for the patience and understanding which people give us the strength and the knowledge and the wisdom to make the correct decisions concerning cities we live in. We're blessed and definitely do this now, amen. Attention, to Lula, pledge.
Our pledge is to Lula, to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and everything is just as our own.
Okay. It's time for sisters to come here, y'all gonna, you know, gonna say anything else, or we're, say it all we said now? Anything else to say, I'll listen to you. Okay. We approved this from the mission of the last meeting, I think, everybody, if anybody got a comment, any changes to them? I'll take the motion to... Motion made by, uh, motion made by Jim, second by Garnett, to accept the minutes, if you're, if you're a favorite, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Minister approved. Minister approved. All right, yard of the month. Okay, yard of the month winner for March. In District One is Curtis Urban at fifty-nine sixty-seven John Hooty Street. In District Two is Chandler Genret at fifty-five fifty-six for Cloud Street. District Three is Eddie Reed, sixty-four ninety-five, Marymore. London Smith is Scotty Poole, sixty-four fifty-five Main Street. Now, I didn't get yours. Did you have yard of the month picked up? We get the last one, we get to sign that yard just with you. Okay, finance. All right, this I get?
Everybody getting good, we're going to be here for a while. Just kidding. So good news is for y'all, we reported on finances last Monday night, and things are like well, not as well as we'd always liked. Anyway, bank balances remain constant. So this is a time for education for those who don't get to join us the third Monday of every month. So you're always welcome. So this is, our fiscal year actually begins July one and ends June thirtieth. So we're way along. We're actually in our thirty-seventh week of fiscal year. So you're going to hear me talk about two funds. We actually have nine different funds that we track. We deal primarily, when we talk today, you're going to hear these are operational costs, not capital expenditures and that sort of thing. So in a nutshell, so I don't put you to sleep, because I can already see some of the eyes go back in the room rolling, back to your head. The most important thing is where we are today, and how much money we spent, how much we brought in, right Garnet?
Right.
And you're, Garnet's the guy that's going to make the difference. We ever run short. Yeah, they're all going to go off. We just found that nobody turned off their phone. What timing is all I can say. I should have just kept talking, right? All right, so where are we right now? Well, we should be at about twenty-nine percent of remaining balance. So revenues, we should have about twenty-nine percent remaining through the end of the year. The good news is, we got a grant this year for five-hundred fifty-two thousand. So that kind of just stored things. I took those numbers out because it would actually say that we're ahead by plus twenty-eight percent. But instead, we're still lacking about fourteen percent revenue, which means that we're quite good when we should be at twenty-nine. More importantly is how much money we spent. This is like you run your household at home. And in our case, where we should be at twenty-nine percent, we're at about thirty, so we have remaining. So we have a positive cash flow of about two-hundred twenty-four thousand dollars. On water and sewer is another fund we talked about operation-wise. Again, where we should be at about twenty-nine percent right now. We actually are at about twenty-eight percent, and we've talked with the council about that. Some of the monies we use are what we call sewer TCR, so people call them tap fees. And that's been a very positive this year. Actually, it's exceeded by about a hundred percent what we'd estimated. But that doesn't go towards operations. So back to the operational side, where we should be at twenty-nine percent, we're at about thirty-three, which gives us a positive cash flow of about fifty-two thousand. Overall, between those two funds, we're about two-hundred seventy-seven thousand. Good. Sadly, I have to tell you that we experienced a lot of our costs at the end of the third and fourth quarter. So, and you'll hear a little bit more about that shortly. Any questions for me that y'all might have? Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, I can cover a couple of the other items real quick on finance. And that would be contract amendments with waste management. As you know, we had the opportunity to talk with the council last week and what's been proposed, an extension of five-year contract. Joey, I believe you've had a chance to review that amendment. We'd originally talked about a new contract. They'd recommended an amendment. As you know, that wouldn't take place until November. Let me get this in front of me. It's an article on television. I'm going to give you all a copy again of the contracts, comments I made to Joey. So this particular agreement would go in force if the council was to approve it now. Increases would not take place until, that's what I copied and viewed. Increases would not take place until November of twenty-twenty-two. And that what we call cost of living increase would not come into place until eleven-one twenty-twenty-three. So why are we doing this? Well, had you been here last week, I could have put you to sleep with that. But what we found is, is the marketplace for waste management or trash collection is just getting killed right now. You know, not surprising when labor forces are killing us. We don't even want to talk about fuel. But other than to say, the new agreement, Joey, and that was my comment to you, that we've removed section five point three in the fuel surcharge, because that would be removed from the amendment in the contract, which right now would be a significant issue for us. So in this particular case, what's been proposed is effective November first, twenty-three, and November one thereafter, the compensation cost would be adjusted by a percentage of consumer pricing to increase index for water, sewer, and trash, also known as the CPI. And if I'm putting you to sleep by a pop, guys, I just want to make sure our folks here clearly understand that. That will not be seasonally adjusted. And then, from that standpoint, the other increases, the cleanup events will remain same. Pulling force in the contract, there would be a change, as you know, the service, they're going automated trucks. With that, we would have made some changes. That would have to be promoted heavily. And then, secondly, would be the increases themselves. So we would go from the effective rate today to fourteen seventy-four a month, and that would protect us for the next five years. I know we went over this all last week. Anybody got any questions for me? Joey, you agree on that, removing section five point three?
Yes, that would be the amendment. Yes, that we would add a, just be subject to removal of section five point three.
Any questions of me? So if the council wants to take that under consideration, we could adopt that proceeding or deny it at the place. Your call.
You've got a little pain. You want to talk later?
We did talk about the finance. If you remember, the finance committee came back. Ironically, what we found, put that into the audience. We will compare ourselves with a lot of surrounding communities. Even with the increases being proposed now, under current conditions, we're still, in a lot of different ways, quite about, especially when we're seeing some of these increases under new contracts. So the finance committee, Garnet, came back with a recommendation to give this full consideration to the council.
You got ready for the minutes? All in favor of this?
Need a motion to approve?
I don't have a motion.
Committee or? Committee or?
Right.
Okay. So we got the motion, that's a meeting recommendation. All in favor of this? All opposed? Take that, right? All right. Okay. Just take your time.
Yes, so water and sewer conditions, I told you I'd still get a chance to put you all to sleep. So current conditions with our operations in water and sewer, everything for the most part is pretty good. Council knows we had to replace the secondary, secondary tank, which was quite an expense of about five thousand dollars. And the marketplace being what it is, you don't get it overnight. You get it when they come. We find a receiving delivery on that. The other, only other thing I want to mention was the county well production. So what we've noted on that particular well is we may have to replace the pump on that. And I'm excited to tell you about that. It's doing fine sometimes, and other times it's not. We've looked at any number of items out there. Interestingly enough, we actually gave those on how long, remember hours we gave them? And for some reason, it's under the hours. So we're going to probably pull the pump and check to see if we're having an issue with that. Our county well is one of four wells that we have. That's all I've got on that, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Mr. Counsel, District Twenty. Since this came out, and we want to re-district Lula based on population changes, we've got that, that's in order, right?
We do. We have, and we have an agreement that would allow provide the services. So basically, all the five districts that are currently in the city would be adjusted via population toward a mountain regional commission, which is a government grant that can assist us with that proposed contract to provide those voting district maps for a cost of five hundred. Because the council wants to take that under consideration for approval, I'm going to form a motion.
I'll say.
Got a motion made by Jean and seconded by Dish to approve that expenditure. Get more discussion on it? All in favor, say aye? All opposed? It's passed.
Mr. Mayor, can you speak up? Because I'm sitting here and I'm having...
I'm sorry.
I'm having problems hearing you.
Sorry. Is that boomer? Is that door back in the back? Okay. I'll use this. But we tried without it, didn't work. Talking about work. Okay. The planning commission is one person short right now. We've interviewed some candidates, and I've asked them, give us what candidates can to look at. So those applications will be taken until April eighth. We'll interview them on April thirteenth, and by their decision, it'll be April eighteenth. So if you're able, either getting involved in planning commission or the city or some other, the application will be available to city or on the website. Okay, Bays County, local, localized tax, they have a meeting, a meeting about that on May third in Homer. And they're also looking at the T-Ball program. We're in process of negotiating that, that too. It's one of those long things. Take it out. You got Craig Room and your question?
We need to vote on that item.
Oh, did?
Yes, sir.
Sir Wood?
Sorry. I missed, I missed one. Only?
In governmental agreement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The I D A, I'm sorry, I missed, missed it. The in governmental agreement with the Bays County had gotten renewed. So any of the council, have you opinions about that? Got your motion approved or not?
What are we, we're back on, I'm sorry?
No, I'm sorry. I missed the vote on that one. Bays County. The localized tax, energy union, is in governmental agreement. We'd have to sign it, and then get money from them.
Okay, okay. Got you. Sorry.
Does it make sense yet? It does to me, but I thought we were sitting in the meeting, we're going to work things.
This is, this is what we share, the where we get the taxes from them, is that right?
Yes, yes.
I understand. Okay. I make a motion that we did that.
Have seconds? You guys, motion made by Denise and seconded by Garnet. They would accept the in governmental agreement for localized tax replacement. I hear more discussion about it? All in favor, say aye? All opposed, say no? It passes. Now, the T-Balls is just pending, this is pending, right?
Yes, right.
So that's what we're running by the poll last November. It's part of building roads and bridges in Bays County. And we got to negotiate their process. It has come on now to, now they know that. I'm trying to decide here, folks. Craig Room had requested consideration for the annexation. He was going to go about Hall County, is that right?
Yes, sir. Haven't heard about it from Hall County on their resolution. Under law, he'll have to submit that resolution with his application.
We're still waiting on that one?
Yes, sir.
All right, now we're down, we're down a little more, I'll let you know about this. The proposed annexation is on a two problems. The Cook is at sixty-four ninety-two Seventh Street. A thirty-one two seven acres from Agro to P R D. First problem, I think Dennis wants to explain what that, what that means.
Oh, we'll try.
Mr. Mayor, citizen comments?
At the end.
That'll be at the end.
It'll be at the end, more cap.
At the end.
So first, I'm going to take staff. There were some comments made earlier, questions, and there were a lot of opinions. And I will comment on opinion, but I'll start by saying, because we have a pastor in the room, we got more than one pastor, never take it, never miss an opportunity. So we'd love to see you at all meetings, not just tonight, the public hearing. And you'll learn a little bit. And some of the things you're going to hear tonight are things that you didn't know, but that's okay. That's why you came tonight, you got to learn. But a lot of them were opinions. We don't comment on opinions. As a matter of fact, the mayor and the council and the staff don't take a position on any application until we hear all the comments. So you're going to get to hear some of that tonight. One of the comments that was made earlier was about sewer type easements. We actually have control of all those easements right now. Let's see, one of the questions was with regards to land regulations and the amount of land. So we actually have a zoning that identifies us at a hundred forty pages, and it tells what will work and where it might work, and what type of classification would be. In our particular case, there's six of these classifications, residential. Tonight, what you're hearing on the Cook application, just for reference, is called planned residential development. Let's see, talked about the second entrance. Trying to make sure I don't miss anybody here, question about surrounding people. So that's more of an opinion. Interestingly enough, there were some comments, and I'll just say this, with regards to the tax side, it's interesting, just a reminder for everybody in the room, everybody should say yay. We don't have property taxes yet, so we'd say yay. But so that's often not factored, hardly ever is, because I'm, let's see, I marked all the ones. The request was, has there been engineering done on the right-of-way for Seventh Street? And the African has not provided engineering. I'll jump ahead and say African didn't provide traffic study either. And that doesn't make them bad people. I'm just answering your question. So let's see. The question was with regards to entrance and right-of-way on the cemetery. That would have to be something that would be engineered and designed not only for access. We have the forty-foot right-of-way, somebody mentioned earlier already, but the road currently meanders. As a matter of fact, somebody said the road was fifteen foot wide. You weren't wrong, but it's actually twelve foot wide in spots. So, and the significance of how that road would have to be approved and engineered, because it's not just the pavement going down. It would be controlling the sidewalks and placing in culverts where the relocations would be. So let's see, taxes already hit on that. But there was a good point made about taxes with regards to the school system. And I'll stay away from the opinion side of that, but that's left up to the school system, unfortunately. We wish they played a larger role in that. I already mentioned about the traffic study, Cook at the sewer. So this is kind of new for all y'all in the room. Nobody's ever wrong about this. But we actually have a statute of law, Eighth Street, a plant that operates on the other side of three sixty-five. Good for us, we keep your prices down. And we're actually under, we've actually let the bid out and under construction for what we call sewer line I, another extension of sewer line, which could serve this property. And let's see, what other questions I have here? Trying to make sure I hit on questions. Interestingly enough, about the remarks about speed bumps, isn't it interesting that in the same time, you have to press speed tables and that sort of thing to control traffic? But other than that, that's really questions of rest. Everybody else was opinions, which we appreciate. Now, the council has, in their possession, an opinion that I have with regards to the property. And we make staff recommendations oftentimes quite deliberate. In this particular development as proposed, and I'll walk you through that for just a second, how that works. Development, like I said, never gets endorsed by the mayor, council, or staff until it's received. And we don't have right of refusal. If it's submitted, we have to look at it and go through actually a pretty detailed process, which this file is an example of. And it usually takes sixty to ninety days to gain even consideration for approval or denial. And during that period, this is our second public hearing that we had tonight. Planning commission has heard about it. I'm going to talk about that in a second. So just for clarity for everybody in the room, we're talking about a piece of property that's identified...
for clarity for everybody in the room, we're talking about a piece of property that's identified as six four ninety-two Seventh Street, uh, owned by the, uh, review of Allen, who was , uh, here tonight with his family. And their application originally proposed thirty-point-twenty-seven acres, proposed annexation for, uh, rezoning properties currently, not all in the city. There's a portion of that property in the city. The rest of it is, uh, uh, zoned agriculture with Hall County. So, I told you all ready to propose the planned residential development for ninety proposed lots. So, here's first thing, uh, Lula Planning Commission, which you heard this last week, uh, just a statement per comment and application with regards to presentation on March first, twenty twenty-two. After leading review and comment, made the following recommendations before the city council. Uh, the planning commission, for your knowledge, is a recommended party. So, theirs is not binding, with only a few minor exceptions. Item A, their motion was to approve the annexation and pass unanimously by those present. Item B, motion was to deny the zoning request to change district, micro, for planned residential development, and that passed unanimously as well for those present. Uh, last but not least, uh, notes, those minutes of planning commission from March first have not been adopted by the planning commission because I haven't met yet. And then next is, uh, city staff recommendation. So, same thing, city, uh, staff recommendation, application for annexation or rezoning. Uh, city staff recommendation for annexation based on, uh, preliminary review of application is recommended approval, uh, for the annexation. And that's based on Hall County. It's not raising any objections for proposed annexation. We actually submit, uh, when an annexation request is made, we submit that to the county. County has a timetable they respond back to. In this particular case, we got a verbal acknowledgement. They didn't have an objection. Their future land use map is ours does recognize the property to transition from, uh, agricultural to density, uh, residential and the future development. And then Lula Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, which I said just a minute ago, took with regards to the annexation. Uh, city staff recommendation for zoning was based upon preliminary review of the application and is recommended to deny, uh, as to the following, uh, information. And I remind y'all, I am again, I can only recommend, I don't carry a clap, uh, with that regard. So, Lula Planning Commission recommendation to deny was one. Uh, and then the subject property is yet to be served by sewer. So, this was, uh, a unique situation. Uh, we contracted for work to be done for Sewer Line I to provide sewer to this property. And, uh, we've built several sewer lines along the years, and, uh, unfortunately, we've run into times when things didn't get quiet as planned. And I think the easiest way I put it, because I'm kinda common folk, was a bird in the hand, four two in the bush. And if you're at the last line, uh, commission and public hearing, that's what I said. If there's an assurance that we had sewer in the ground today, I could recommend four against with regards to the sewer. Sewer's not in the ground. We do have it under contract. So, from my position, the council should consider whether or not, uh, the police know that would be in a timeframe. I heard contingency tonight, uh, that zoning can be made on contingency. Uh, the only reference I made to that, Joey, is, and I think we can go back, because the application didn't recognize that in contingency, so that's something council could consider. Uh, and then proposed access points. So, we received the information this afternoon that you heard about earlier from Miss Range, was kind enough to come up and explain. We received that about three-thirty today. This was done in advance of that. So, the proposed two access points for the property by developer, uh, access to narrow more subdivision appears to take place within screen buffer, uh, further the city's valuation of sewer easement survey conflicts with the actual property that was proposed, uh, would be a problem, and, uh, we would take position positive on that. So, we would, uh, ask the council to deny that. I know that pulled off the table tonight. And then, uh, B, another reason for our views on that is access off Seventh Street under current location and paid service, which we talked about. Uh, and then I actually addressed with the council that in some places, pavement was left in twelve-footed places. And then four additional public comments not been heard. I got to hear some more of that tonight, and I very appreciate that. And then five was statement factors, uh, information provided by the applicant identified in the references below. So, these were the references, and this was just for, uh, the council's sake. Uh, they identified, uh, total acre thirty-point-twenty-seven as part of their application. Uh, site information provided by the applicant identifies property being twenty-nine-point-thirty-five acres and a difference of point ninety-two. So, when I factor in what works from our standpoint, and we're formulating that, uh, that being the difference doesn't sound like a significant amount, but it is almost an acre. And Jane, if I'm understanding the correct number now is twenty-nine-point-three-five?
Yes, sir.
So, and then the next one would be, uh, right-of-ways. We actually understand this is for the sake of the council. Uh, their fifty-foot right-of-way would be, uh, four-point-seven, or zero-point-seven-two acres. Exterior buffer showing a thirty-five-foot exterior buffer. Screen space showing around eleven-point-six acres, roughly not thirty-nine percent, including the screen buffers, proposed stormwater ponds. Creek buffer showing fifty-foot undisturbed, seventy-five-foot impervious setback amenities. Initially, when I wrote this report, it was based on sidewalks and walking trails. I know they addressed some additional of that. And then a minimum lot size. I'm still a little confused on this, so I went ahead and put down, made my, some of my remarks difficult. So, the original applications that said that square footage on the lot size would be seven thousand two hundred and fifty, which is actually point sixteen to an acre according to their application. But the information provided by the applicant on site plan, uh, actually differs, and it shows, uh, conflicting states showing typical lot size of being five thousand five hundred, uh, square foot or point twelve when they can. So, uh, the application said, uh, seventy-two hundred and fifty square foot, but the site plan recognizes, uh, five thousand five hundred, uh, which, I don't, I'm not sure which number to use on that particular one, but I did address that for the council. And then applicant is not identified fiber or national test to be provided, nor are they required to. That's just part of their statement, so don't get confused with that. Other staff, uh, comments, consideration for, uh, water and sewer system improvements, transmission and storage should be factored into consideration. Currently, new construction of residential properties consider an allowance of consumption for surprisingly two hundred and forty gallons a day for each residence. Under current condition, the proposed application will generate a need of approximately twenty-one thousand six hundred gallons per day and about five percent of one day store. Such capacity needs would require system improvements for transmission. Productions, stores be considered as with any new development. Really, what we're saying there for the council's benefit, and you know this, is we use a barometer. We have so much production, and we need to understand how much production we'll need in the future. And so, in this particular case, you need to understand this is taking away twenty-one thousand, uh, gallons, and then the storage capacity needs to be there. Can we supply that today? Yes. More importantly, can we supply that tomorrow for development? So, you need to keep that in the back of your mind. And then the sewer system, current projects allow for future development, increasing discharge of the waste treatment facility as designed and as permitted. So, ironically, uh, one of the questions on Sewer Line I that we approved, it has to be permitted. It's been permitted for construction, but it also has to be permitted for completion. So, uh, that hadn't happened yet. Consideration of additional minimum, again, two hundred and forty gallons a day. By the way, that's under the engineering estimate, uh, for daily residential units, uh, treatment capacity should be factored into the daily discharge, which I'm gonna put you to sleep on. Now, we have three hundred and eighty-five thousand gallons permitted per day. Current daily discharge of one hundred and thirty thousand gallons should factor into consideration with regards to system improvements. As prioritized and identified by council, same thing. As you're using it up, you have to think about when you pull the trigger and you make a placement on it. And then planned residential development, which is what's been proposed today, can offer a variety of development factors. Some of those you've heard the seating in the application itself. Out of a minimum, development schedule should be provided so that the city and the community can understand when and if improvements are required can be planned and implemented. I don't have a development schedule. I can't comment on that. Uh, and then further specific information to be attained through numerous elements addressed above. And in that case, some of that information was provided today. Any questions of me from the council?
Mr. Mayor, you can take it, uh, if you consider this. Uh, you'll take it. First issue would be annexation, and then the rezon. Is that what you go for?
Okay. As far as annexation, the council, we got any comments or proposals?
Motion made by Gene Brownett, annex at the end.
What's your opinion?
Guards, this seconded. All in favor of annexing millions to the city? Say aye.
No, no.
All opposed? Say no. That passes unanimous vote. Uh, rezoning. Anybody got any comments about rezoning?
I'll make a motion to deny rezoning.
We have a motion by Denise Shaw. Do you deny rezoning?
Not so much.
Second by Gene Brownett. Do you have more discussion about it? All in favor of denying rezoning application? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say no. Application for rezoning is denied. Okay. Urban camping homeless issues. We got a post here, April eleventh, and April eighteenth. Okay. We have all the moments for urban camping homeless issues. We look, the Saturday public hearing date, however, for April eleventh, uh, court session next month, and talk April eighteen to council meeting next month. All right. The votes I've made remain for this week. And, if you bring your notes, I'll give them to you.
I don't know anything on that. If you're determined, I'm sorry.
Oh, I was saying, I'm gonna say, maybe you...
So, we had an opportunity to be a positive safety. I think, uh, a bigger issue was proposed ordinance on adoption. And then secondly, Joey, just for your direction, is we would like consider, uh, if you provide to us the ordering and just little conduct ordinance in the future, so we can start to get back to this. All right. And then the next item we're going to, to the street committee, and, uh, the street committee's recommended, uh, under Tame Street resurfacing direction, that once that resurfacing projects start, that we add that to it for cost and consideration to council. And then, uh, last but not least, revisit the, uh, Railroad Avenue rehabilitation for council. We'll do that in a future meeting. And then, uh, uh, we have looked at, uh, potential resurfacing for some of the streets. Uh, nothing of this fine print forward to the council.
Okay. So, guys, the Lula ladies lunch and dinner, which they've been waiting for lunch and six dollars for dinner. Have you eaten? Had a deep hug?
Yes.
Sometimes I forget one pass. Okay. And, uh, Carl Hunter, Caboose, we didn't go nation, but I'm still, still, oh, you can donate. Yes, yeah. He'll watch two twelve. Little man, he was talking sign, he'll watch two twelve, little one, turn up out there. Yeah, I got it right this time. And, uh, in case y'all haven't noticed, the Caboose has been working on, and, and somebody said Carl Hunter loved us, because I didn't know Carl. So, I can't, I know a little bit. I feel sorry now. And the historical side of the beach, the fourth Monday of the month, right here, seven o'clock, which is next month, next Monday. And railroad days. Has anybody seen the flowers?
They're in the back of the room.
Near the back of the room. Okay. It's May sixth and May seventh. The parade's gonna be Saturday. The booth's gonna open Friday and Saturday. Application for both and the parade. This will be a parade and booths are on the website and the city hall. And, I think I got them all. All right. It's time for citizen comments. Anybody got anything more to say?
What can?
Citizen comments. Citizen comments.
Citizen comments. Thank you.
I want to say, this is a blessing, inspiration, and encouragement, whether you are an official or a citizen. I want to say to all mayor, our city council members, our city manager, and our knowledgeable city attorney, don't let people, uh, in certain circumstances make you feel that we, as a community, can move forward, because we citizens know we can if we continue to believe and work together, listening to the people that have foresight. We citizens have a great trust in our city officials. If Abraham Witten, who was born in a log cabin under poor circumstances, didn't let that stop him from believing in better things and in brighter futures, then what is our excuse? We fought ahead and became the president of United States of America. We have, we have got to rid ourselves of empty thinking and apathy. We must stop looking back and start concentrating on the wonderful things that lie ahead. You can't look forward if you keep looking backwards. During the Second World War, we kept looking forward. That is why we were successful. We can't let our failures define us, but we must let our failures teach us, whether we are the officials or citizens of this great city of Luma. Just remember, there's a page coming in regards to your actions and your intentions. All of us feel we make mistakes, but it gives us a chance to learn from our mistakes. You can't talk about defeat and expect victory. If you can't be positive, then keep quiet, or otherwise you will cause other people not to help you. Just because things don't go the way we wish, please don't give up, because there are better times and opportunities ahead of us. People can't be different from you without being wrong. It may be important to remember how we started, but it is even more important to note how we finished. Don't be surprised when you're working toward progress that you'll face criticism. Let us not become discouraged, but fulfill the dreams that has inspired us. Tongues arms, we puzzle problems in our lives, that that prevents us from seeing the good and the progress in others. Please don't let people of this nature dive in, dampen your goals and your aspirations, because these people need to realize that they are in a hopeless situation. They need to get out of. No matter what has happened in our past that may have kept us from being better things, we can restore hope in a brighter future for everyone. We have to believe that it's even, when we can't see it in the present time. This is why I'm saying to the mayor, the council, members of the city manager, and our wonderful, uh, city attorney, don't give up hope, because there are better days ahead for all of us, whether we have or live to see them happen. I have faith that they will. I also want to thank all of you for the wonderful, uh, ninety-seven birthday that you have given me. I don't want to pass that by. I want to thank all of you, and I certainly want to thank all of you citizens for the love and concern that you have had for me down through the years and the twenty years I spent on the city council. I want to tell all of you, I love you, I appreciate you. How many people get three parades like I got? And I love you. And that's what I want to say to all of you, and thank all of you, I love you. Take your care. And don't give up hope, hope for the future of this city. I know it can happen, okay? You gotta keep an open mind. What has been good for us older folks is no longer good for our youth. They need to look ahead and set the things that's happening. And thank you, mayor, for everything, okay?
Thank you, Mark Allen. Do you have something you want to say?
I just wanted to say thank you for serving for all of you and for listening to us.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sharon Vincent. I live at fifty-seven nineteen Old Cordelia Highway, forty-seven ninety. What am I saying? Oh, my goodness. Um, I just want to pass along something that was said to me, uh, yesterday at church. One of our church members, she said she rode through Lula the other day. She said, I haven't rode through there in a long time, and it used to look shabby. And she said, it is really nice now. She said, it's so pretty, so pleasant. And I said, well, that's because of all our city workers. They work so hard. The people who are in charge, and so, everybody deserves a compliment, because I think Lula does look pretty. It's a town to be proud of. And that's all I have to say.
Anybody else? All right, council, your turn. Garnet?
I'd like to thank everybody. Crowd looked great. And I'd like to suggest us get together and have a one-day retreat with all of us, discuss some of the problems and what we've built.
Land, you want a second? Land?
I just glad everybody came out tonight. I just prayed it in there. This is what we need, uh, ever meet, ever meet, kind of meet me out, the people come out and state what they believe in and what they want to see the city of Lula be. Thank you.
And I also want to say, I want to congratulate all of you there. You gave everybody a chance to speak with respect and everything, and we owe you people respect too. It doesn't just one way.
I just want to thank everyone for coming out, and you're more than welcome to come back next month to the meetings. Um, and I also want to, um, I kinda missed both last Monday, not on purpose, um, but the drug and alcohol problem come up, and I was, um, talking about a meeting that we have, uh, at Bethlehem Baptist Church, and I said it was on Mondays, and it's not. It's on Fridays, and it's from seven to eight, and it's called Break Every Chain. So, if you know anybody that, um, needs a program that is nearby, they meet every week, and usually there's somebody there around six-thirty, um, so, and I think they start promptly at seven.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other thing I've mentioned to Garnet in, uh, finance and verb about this, that I mentioned to Gene earlier. Uh, we have a bid to redo the floor of the Caboose, and that would be under contingency budget, if y'all are fine with that, we're gonna go for that higher.
I'm fine with it. It's looking good.
With our president, he was, uh...
Man, I just try and get it done.
Thank you, Mary. I won't thank you about coming out here tonight. It's basically me. I'm, I'm already have to do this, y'all. Slowly, I'm an old one. I don't do this any fast. But I appreciate y'all coming out and coming back next month. We'll do it again. Thank y'all. We're not gonna have Zach's second tonight. All I, we need, we're gonna talk about resolving sales, so we're all going home. Thank you.
We need to make a motion. We gotta make a motion. I made the motion that we charged.
Have a lovely journey.